So I have, and I think, you know, I think we all know that. And, and so, and obviously following our constituents too is, is, is why we're here. And actually, the story that I told earlier about my first victory, uh, running for county commissioner, that experience will live with me no matter where I go because what it reminds me is one vote. That means every single person in my district matters, matters. And that means all of you matter to me. You all matter to Representative Jones and whatever office I hold in the future. I don't hold it because I'm something special. I hold it because you all have put your trust in me in that moment to temporarily occupy a chair and vote on your behalf, but with your guidance. Uh, and not that I can go off and do my own thing, but that I can go off and, and listen and engage and bring back and, and, and bring your thoughts and feedback to that table. I'm not there alone. And so to your point, Gail, conversations like this help to make that a reality and help to make all of you more informed about what's happening. So, uh, part of why I was invited here in addition to talking about the state level issues is to talk about what is county government? Because I honestly have to tell you, the, the most common question I've ever gotten is, what is county government? Even people that know government, even people that are involved in politics, have no idea what county government does. And that is not to be something to be, you know, uh, sad about or ashamed of. It's common. A lot of people don't know what county government does. So I'm here today to hopefully give you a little bit of an overview of what we do. Um, and unfortunately and fortunately, at the same time, the amount of work that the county does is, uh, it is broad, uh, is very broad. And so there are a lot of buckets of different things that we can talk about. But the overarching executive summary on county government is that, um, counties, so first of all, there's 83 counties in the state of Michigan. So Michigan, the state subdivided into 83 counties. Um, each county has different dynamics. Um, but every county under our constitution is composed in a very similar way. Um, at the top of the organization, obviously, is the citizens of the district who elect the county board of commissioners. The county board of commissioners can range in size, depending on the county, between five and I believe 25 members, depending on the county. Um, and those decisions are made on a, every 10 year basis, uh, on how many county commissioners there will be. In addition to the county board of commissioners, and I will go into what the county board of commissioners does, but in addition to the county board of commissioners, every county has a set of county wide elected officials. In Washtenaw County, we have five of them. First, we have the county treasurer. The county treasurer's responsibility is to manage all of the, uh, money that is taken in, in tax dollars. Um, the treasurer invests those dollars, um, and, uh, does several other things, including when you talk about, um, property foreclosure. So if somebody doesn't pay their taxes and the county can foreclose on their property, uh, it is the county treasurer that is responsible for doing that. Um, if, in, in our case in Washtenaw County, the county treasurer has several programs to help people work through foreclosure proceedings. But, um, the county treasurer is responsible for foreclosing, for tax foreclosing, for tax foreclosure, um, does not deal with mortgage foreclosure. So if you don't pay your mortgage, that is dealt with separately. But if you don't pay your taxes, it is the treasurer, the county treasurer that, um, addresses that issue. So that's one county wide elected official. The other one is the county sheriff. Um, and I believe, uh, that your last session, Gail, was focused around the office of the county sheriff. So I won't go into any detail there, but that is one of the largest components of county government. County sheriff is directly elected by the people, just like the county treasurer. Um, the third county wide elected office is the county prosecutor. Um, and the county prosecutor is responsible for, uh, basically, uh, taking people who are, um, you know, who have, uh, been, who are being prosecuted for a crime, um, to court. Uh, and they are basically making, in a sense, the public's case on, on behalf of the public in court, um, against the defendant, um, who allegedly has committed a crime. Um, remember, everybody's innocent until proven guilty. Uh, but the prosecutor's responsibility is basically to go and prosecute that crime in court. Um, so that's the third, uh, in some states, it's called the district attorney. In Michigan, we call it the county prosecutor. Um, so it's a slightly different, um, name, but you may have heard that in the past. So that's the third county wide elected office. The fourth, uh, in Washtenaw County is the clerk, register of deeds. Um, and it's weird, you'll see that on, uh, the clerk's office. It says clerk, and then there's a slash, and it says registrar of deeds. Because in Washtenaw County, uh, Larry Kestenbaum, who's our county clerk, is both the clerk and registrar of deeds. Some counties, um, have those two roles separated. So you can, some counties will have a county clerk separate from a registrar of deeds. What does the county clerk do? The county clerk is responsible for running elections in Washtenaw County. Um, now cities also have their own clerk's offices. So most cities will run their elections independent, but the county is responsible for coordinating and compiling all of the election, uh, uh, day of election activities, the election results, et cetera, et cetera, from the entire county, including from the municipal, municipalities, the cities and townships that have their own clerk's offices. Um, and so the county, that's what the county clerk does. The county clerk also deals with things like concealed pistol licenses. Um, you know, and there's several other licenses that people can get from the county clerk. That's the county clerk's responsibility. The registrar of deeds, um, which again is a combined function in Washtenaw County, but in some counties it's separate. But the registrar of deeds function is, uh, your deed on your home. If you own a home, if you get a mortgage on a home, um, you will have to get a deed for the property. And so it's essentially a system, um, that was created, uh, you know, over a century ago of ensuring that, uh, all proper is properly accounted ownership has been in the past, um, who has owned the property in the past. And so the deed is a very important legal document. And the registrar of deeds is the keeper of the final, uh, document of tho- all of those deeds. So anybody that owns a home, or even frankly, even if you're renting a house or renting an apartment, the deed can be an important document for you to know who is the ultimate owner of this property, who owned it before, um, did the previous owner, you know, uh, are there any violations on the deed, et cetera, et cetera. So these are very important documents that the registrar of deeds holds. So, but that's in Washtenaw County clerk, register of deeds and other counties, it's separated. The, the fifth and, uh, final office, uh, that's elected county wide is the office of the water resources commissioner. Um, in some counties, it is called the drain commissioner. Um, that is, uh, the older term that was used, um, up to the founding of the state of Michigan, when our first constitution in the 1800s was drafted, they called it the drain commissioner. Now we call it the water resources commissioner in some counties, uh, to recognize that the management of water is a resource, not just, uh, in the drain connotates, we're just trying to get water from point A to point B. Water resources, the connotation is we are actually viewing water as an asset to our community. Um, the history on drain commissioners is that they were initial, initially, they created this job in the state of Michigan because we had a lot of, um, swampland and there was a push to, uh, basically create more agriculture in the state of Michigan. And in order to create agriculture on swampland, you have to unfortunately drain the swampland. Um, and that is something that we have now realized in our modern day that that was a mistake for us to drain as much swampland as we did because it has massive environmental impacts on our community. When you don't have wetlands, you have flooding, et cetera, et cetera. But basically that is the genesis, the creation of drain commissioners came from that basic concept. And the drain commissioners for many decades were responsible for creating these county drains. So, um, there are, there are of course rivers that are naturally occurring. There are creeks that are naturally occurring. And there are drains which are basically manmade rivers or creeks, um, that are all, if you drive across rural county, um, or even in some more urban areas, you will see that there are county, uh, these drains that are dug into the landscape. And that is where these, uh, wetlands essentially were drained. The, the water was drained into those drains and then into the Huron River or other rivers, wherever you are in the state, um, to make way for this agricultural land. And so that's the history of drain commissioners. Now we call them water resources commissioners and the job has evolved to be actually more of a steward of the, um, uh, natural resources and water resources that we have. So actually now the drain commissioner or the water resources commissioner in Washtenaw is looking at how do we recreate some, um, wet, wetland habitat? Uh, because as I was saying, wetlands help to mitigate or, or reduce the risk of flooding. And so on the south side of Ann Arbor, for example, we have, uh, Mary Beth Doyle Park. Um, and in the middle of Mary Beth Doyle Park is a massive wetland. Um, and we know the south side of Ann Arbor is very prone to flooding. We've had the Bryant neighborhood in Ann Arbor, which is, uh, very prone to flooding. They actually built it with some huge flaws. Um, people's crawl spaces are, uh, have been flooding, mold issues, et cetera. Well, we're not going to solve those problems if we don't reintroduce more wetlands into the landscape. And so that's something the water resources commissioners intimately involved in. So those are the five county wide elected officials in Washtenaw County. Um, it, so each of those five manages the function of their office independently. And the key, the key connection to the county board of commissioners and the primary responsibility of the county board of commissioners, um, which again, you can have anywhere from five to 25, depending on the county, they are elected by district, um, by districts, uh, in, in each county. And, uh, the primary function of the county board is, as we talked about with the state reps, is to pass a county budget, um, allocating funds and resources to different departments and divisions that do different types of work. And so of course, the connection, the primary connection between the county board and the county wide elected officials is a funding function. So we are the ones that actually, um, as county commissioners, make sure that the sheriff has the money that the sheriff needs, water resources has the money water resources needs, and they submit plans to us that we then fund essentially. Now there is a whole other, um, part of county government that is independently elected, and that is the judiciary. So all of our county judges, um, given the late nature of our meeting, I won't go into the full depth of how the judiciary works. I'm sure that Gail, you're going to organize another one of these sessions to talk about the judicial system. But, uh, in a nutshell, uh, the, there is what's called district courts and there is what's called circuit courts. Um, they deal with different types of crimes. Um, circuit courts tend to be, uh, more, well, I'll just say, they, they tend to deal with different types of, of crimes. And so for district courts, uh, the city of Ann Arbor has, depending on population, your community may have its own district court. In Washtenaw County, there are two communities that have their own district court. It is city of Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti Township. Those are the only two communities that have above the threshold, population wise, to have their own district court. Everywhere else in the county is within the county's district court system. So the county has its own district court system. So when there is a county district judge election, um, the people of the city of Ann Arbor and the people of Ypsilanti Township will not vote on that position. It is only voted on by the remaining, uh, citizens of Washtenaw County because the jurisdiction of those other district, county wide district judges do not include city of Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti Township. Um, but the county government is responsible for funding that district court. Um, so, so that's the district court. And then you have the circuit court. Circuit court does include the whole county, including the city of Ann Arbor, including the city of, uh, Ypsilanti Township. Um, and so circuit court judges are elected county wide. Um, circuit court meets downtown Ann Arbor on main, on Huron Street at the county courthouse. Um, and there are several circuit court judges. Um, again, the relationship, they are directly elected by the public and the relationship between the county board of commissioners and, uh, the, the, the circuit court and district court is a funding relationship. So we allocate the money to make sure that they can run their court. In terms of the breakdown of county government, about 60% of the funds that the county allocates go to, uh, criminal justice system and public safety. So the sheriff and the district and circuit courts get about 60% of all the money that the county has, um, that, that the county takes in. So that's a pretty big chunk. And that is, like I said, that's where most of the money goes. Um, another big chunk of the budget that is, uh, that is major is that the county provides mental health services, um, i- in, in Washtenaw County. And so mental health care, again, we talked about at the state level, the funds come from the federal government to the state government. And then from the state government, they go to what's called, uh, P I H P. Um, and I don't even, can't even think of what the acronym means, but it's a regional, uh, governmental body that receives the federal dollars specifically for mental health care and then distributes them out to individual counties. So then Washtenaw County government receives the money from the P I H P and provides mental health services for, uh, uh, Washtenaw County. Um, mostly for Medicaid eligible, um, individuals. The county is the provider for, uh, mental health services. That is probably the largest part of the budget outside of, uh, public safety and, uh, criminal justice system is the mental health, uh, funding in, in the budget. Um, the county also provides, uh, human services. So, uh, we fund a lot of nonprofits in the county, everything from the Delana Center to Avalon Housing to, um, several other nonprofits across the county that provide housing and homelessness services, that provide youth services, senior services. Um, the county, you know, uh, provides a lot of those functions. Um, and then, so that's, that's kind of the broad overview. There's a lot of other stuff that the county does. There's about a dozen different departments, um, within the county that, that provide those various functions. Um, the last thing I'll say really quickly before I turn it over to Gail, how does the county collect the money that it uses for all these different programs I'm talking about? Um, it is basically a hundred percent, uh, property taxes. So county wide, it's a 4.5 mil is the millage rate. Mil means, uh, basically $4.5 for every thousand dollars of taxable value on your property goes to the county. Um, so that's the mil, that's the millage rate that the county collects. Um, we also have some specific programs within that, like, um, that are specific millages. So like we did a mental health and public safety millage in Washtenaw County. Um, that's separate from this 4.5 mils and that goes to specific programming. There's a 911, um, 800 megahertz millage that goes to help fund, uh, 911 services when you call 911. And those are specifically, um, laid out on your tax bill as separate line items that you pay for in your taxes. But primarily, all in all, it is property taxes that pay for county government. Um, again, unless you're talking about a specified service like mental health care, which is federal dollars that come down, um, that the county then allocates for mental health care. But primarily, it's all property taxes that come in. County budget approximately, when you include federal and property tax dollars, uh, is somewhere between three and four million, three and $400 million, um, is the total county, uh, kind of budget. So, Gail.
Thank you. Can you speak to county commissioners specifically? And the inequities of the distribution of ARPA dollars from the last two years? And what do we do as residents who suffer from the inequities? How can we make sure that the voices are heard from people who have not been at the table and have, um, endured the greatest hardships? It, with another variant coming, um, and no monies, as we know right now, from the, uh, the state coming into the county as it relates to, you know, even mask and, uh, we do have some testing kits. However, just the, the, the horrible inequities that happen and the loss of lives from 48197, 48198. Um, what can we look forward to in 2023? Or should we, you know, there are people on this call from certainly other, other counties and other states. And for us to be in Washtenaw County as rich as we are, for, uh, for them to not think of people of color and, um, economically disadvantaged people, it's, it's quite a shame for what we witnessed. So I'd like to hear going forward, what can the, the people do, um, to let their voices be heard, to make sure that we don't continue in 23, what, uh, totally was disproportionate in, uh, 21 and 22. Thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think at the advantage that you have at the county level is that not a lot of people show up to county board meetings because like I said, not a lot of people know what county government even does. And so a lot of times at our board meetings, we don't have anybody there, like anybody at all. So if you show up to a board meeting and you speak, there's public comment time at the beginning, three minutes, you can come and you can say your piece at that time. Now, obviously, uh, Gail would probably tell me, but how do people, you know, how do people know when to show up, uh, and what to say? And, and I think that, you know, that would be, and you see now I'm thinking like you, Gail. And so, uh, but, and so that's, that's what we need to be like really addressing is, you know, making sure that this, in this type of conversation, this type of information, that people go to those meetings sort of like armed with the right questions to ask and know what the issues of the day are. But my point is, um, that, that you can have an incredible impact by showing up at a county board meeting or by contacting a county commissioner because we don't have, uh, as much public interest in our meetings. Um, and so when it comes to an issue like what Gail is talking about, where we receive federal, and this was before I was on the board, but we received all these federal dollars through ARPA. And instead of prioritizing, um, you know, the east side of the county, uh, with, you know, funding and services, a lot of the money ended up going frankly, to the western side of the county that in my opinion, just doesn't need the same amount of, you know, services and resources that the eastern side of the county does. And, uh, and, and the focus became on broadband and internet connectivity because everybody wanted to basically connect to the internet during the pandemic so they could do Zoom calls and stuff like that. And yes, that is a component of things, but there are more pressing needs that we need to address. Uh, human needs, uh, you know, shelter needs, food and eating needs, healthcare needs. Um, and a lot of those needs actually rest, uh, east of 23. And so there was a real underinvestment in terms of taking in that money in terms of, and, and Gail has pointed this out several times of when ARPA was put together, it was intended to be for those purposes. Were some of these other things, uh, peripherally referred to? Yeah, but what was the main core of what was intended to be funded? It was really the things that I just mentioned. And where's the need? It's east of 23. And so that's where a lot of the money, the lion's share of the money should have gone, but unfortunately didn't. Um, and so that was, uh, that was something really that was an inequity and injustice that, uh, that we now should be looking to resolve because there is some money still left. It's not a lot, but there is some money still left. And how, how are we going to spend it? Um, and if I have my way, it's going to be spent east of 23. And we need you to show up to come and talk about how, um, what are the needs that you're seeing that have, uh, resulted from the pandemic or that are still existing because we are still in a pandemic? Um, what are the needs? And, you know, outlining what those are. And, and some of it can just be real from your perspective. It doesn't have to be, you know, formulated in a way that you think commissioners are going to understand. It can just be, this is what I'm seeing. Um, and I want to make sure that, that the commissioners know that. And like I said, because there's so few people that show up, your voice can actually have a big weight in those, in those types of settings. Um, and so, you know, I, I would encourage you all to, you know, to come to our meetings, to go to the YPSY Can I Share website, look up our, uh, cell phone numbers, our emails, get in touch with us and let us know. And again, doesn't have to be your county commissioner. Um, it can be any county commissioner. And I think that you would have hopefully a willingness for people to communicate with you and talk because these decisions get made by, in Washtenaw County, a board of nine individuals that are, um, you know, responsible for the whole county. So, um, you know, we want people to be engaged, but I've been talking a lot. I want to make sure that I answer any questions. And I know the hour is getting late, so I don't want to drone on for too long here. Any questions?
It tightly interwoven throughout all our discussion, yeah, is the reality of politics. And that's the driver of the lack of accomplishment when it comes to, um, equity. So, but that said, uh, with the November election, um, we've had, uh, something that, uh, we've never seen in the last 40 years where all three houses of government are under Democratic leadership. And, um, you know, uh, and I, and I'm wondering if there-
Gone unmuted. And, um, if you have a question, I'm happy to come back to you. But let's, let's finish Patrick's question, then we can come to you if you, if you have a-
And my short, uh, yeah, I want to keep this, uh, quick. Just what is the inside chatter that's going on right now? Um, you know, with the, uh, the reps and the senators and the governor, uh, knowing that, uh, the, the Democrats are in charge. Um, and, uh, are, are there any, um, expectations that, uh, that, that, you know, the leadership, the democratic leadership in the state now, um, are looking towards over the next two years? Just, just curiosity question. It's a little off, a little off from our, um, uh, discussion, but I think it is related to a certain extent. So, thank you.
Yeah, Patrick, I think there, there definitely is a lot of discussion. There's a lot of enthusiasm. People are very positive, uh, and looking to make change. And, um, you know, we've gone 12 years in the House and almost 40 years in the Senate, uh, with Republican control. And, you know, there's a lot of things, like things that I talked about that Snyder put in place when he came into power in 2011 with a Republican trifecta that I think the Democrats are looking at opportunities to, um, roll some of that back and, and restore, uh, you know, some rules in our state that, uh, you know, help the environment, that help working people. Um, and so, yeah, that's all on the table. And I think people are definitely looking at that. One of the things that applies to local government, um, and to county government in particular is that one of the ways that counties are funded, uh, it's a minor way, so I didn't mention it earlier. Um, like I said, primarily it is rev, uh, revenue from our property taxes that, uh, that fund county government. But one of the other ways the county government is funded is through something called revenue sharing. And if you remember earlier when I was talking about the state budget and sales taxes, 25% of the sales tax revenue goes into the revenue sharing reserve fund. Those dollars are then allocated to cities primarily. Um, and the state legislature allocates, uh, what's called discretionary revenue sharing. So it's not constitutionally guaranteed, but the legislature chooses to appropriate revenue sharing to counties. They have traditionally appropriated that revenue to counties. Um, and so, but under Republican control, that dollar amount has been reduced severely. In fact, under Snyder, um, it was, uh, cut basically to nothing, uh, for a long time. And so we had to do without, basically without any revenue sharing, even under Granholm. Um, for a while, we didn't have revenue sharing. And so now there's an opportunity with a democratic, uh, controlled legislature to restore budgetary prioritization of revenue sharing for counties that will allow us to again amplify, to Gail's point, what we can do on the east side of the county. And I do think that one of the things, getting back to, to Gail's question that we need to be looking at is establishing services and a presence that is more, uh, that is more permanent on the east side of the county. A lot of times what happens is we will, um, put money towards, uh, a nonprofit. It's one time money. It goes to the east side. It's used for good for a year, two years, uh, but then the, the impact kind of, uh, goes away. Um, and the county, I think, does a really bad job of establishing permanent services, um, east of 23 and establishing that, um, that we care and that we're going to invest. Because it does, the, the word investment, I think, is important because it does mean that we are investing in the long term on the east side of the county. Um, and there, the county just hasn't done a good job of that. And so here we have an opportunity, if we can get more revenue sharing dollars, um, and we have money already on the table to be able to hopefully do some of that. But if we can bring in more- But if we can bring in more revenue sharing dollars, it will amplify our ability certainly to make that kind of an impact. Um, Jamila, got your hand up? And then Cheryl's next.
Yep, I have a question. Um, so recently, um, uh, and I'm very proud that the Board of Commissioners, they did give money to grassroots community, uh, community services. And I, I'm really excited about that, and I hope that is something that could be, uh, permanent. And, uh, flip side, uh, I know that you guys just went through this, that thing where you did, um, the, the job, how much you should be getting paid. You guys just went through that process. And I know that, um, some people haven't started getting paid or have their increases and stuff ever happened. I'm wondering, how does, well, how does the Board of Commissioners play in how city employees get paid and like about their raises and all that stuff? Do they, do they have anything to do with it really, or you tell me a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. So, uh, the direct answer to your question is absolutely, the Board of Commissioners has, uh, direct control over how county employees get paid. Nothing to do with how city employees get paid for the cities of Ipsilanti, Ann Arbor, et cetera. But for county employees, yes, hundred percent, uh, the county board does have direct control over how, uh, county employees get paid. Now, the longer answer to the question is there's a few caveats. The first is, um, most county employees are in a bargaining unit under a labor union. Um, each of those bargaining units has a contract with the county board of commissioners, with the county, um, on what they're going to get paid and when they're going to get paid. What is currently happening is that, um, the county in two thousand thirteen, so, uh, right to work, um, which, which is essentially a misnomer. Uh, because what it does is it basically takes away the ability to, uh, have strong unions in the state of Michigan. And as we all know, unions that are strong, increase wages for everybody, whether you're in a union or not. And so what it allows is for people that are getting the benefits of a union to not have to actually pay into the union and make sure that the union is strong. That's what right to work allows. So it's a misnomer, but it was, the law was changed in two thousand thirteen to allow for right to work. But it, so in two thousand thirteen, what the county did is they said to our unions and the unions came forward and said, hey, we would like to, uh, basically enshrine pre-right-to-work legal, uh, you know, precedent in our union contracts for the next ten years. And so we negotiated ten-year contracts with our bargaining units. Um, and the main impetus for that was again to say, uh, everybody in the union is going to be paying dues to stay in the union, to keep the union strong. Um, even though the state law changed, if we do the contract before the state law comes into effect, then it will, then the, then pre-right-to-work legal conditions will be in effect through the length of the contract. And so twenty thirteen was ten years ago, now it's twenty twenty-three, and we're going to be renegotiating those contracts. So the downside of, the upside of a twenty, uh, ten-year contract is you get to, you know, uh, avoid the, the negative impacts of the so-called right-to-work law. The, the negative side of it is that, uh, perhaps given all of the changes in the environment and the climate with COVID, all that stuff, uh, salary increases, um, aren't as aggressive as they could have been or should have been, had the contracts been renegotiated every so often. So there's pros and cons to doing these longer-term contracts. Um, and so what we are dealing with now is that sort of pent-up, uh, you know, demand for an increase, a, a more aggressive increase in salaries. And there was a study done recently on salaries across the county, um, and that showed that most county employees, many county employees are underpaid. Um, administrators, uh, were, ended up getting paid, uh, pretty well. They're still paid pretty well. Uh, but even some, uh, people in administration were slightly underpaid, but ma- mainly the people on the bottom end of the salary, uh, uh, um, ladder were vastly, vastly underpaid. And so that's something now that the county, uh, employees are elevating to the board level, um, that the certain board members are looking at addressing, um, you know, uh, more immediately. But again, we have a labor contract that's up at the end of this year. So I think a lot of that will be part of the discussion that's going to happen, um, in, in this, in this specific calendar year. When it comes to commissioner salaries, go ahead, Jamila.
No, I was gonna say, um, I would like to put a, uh, uh, plant a seed about that, in that process about making sure that as you implement the raises, as you start from the bottom up instead of the top up. I know it's like in business, this is usually the CEOs and all the, they get all the money, then the people at the bottom don't get anything, right? So if you just did this study that shows that people are grossly underpaid, and you know it's the people at the bottom, they should be the first to get the raises before anybody else, even if everybody, even if it's somebody that make a decent raise right now. It's not the best and they deserve a raise, but right now they're making a decent wage, just to get everyday people to a place where they're at a living wage. It sucks being broke. It fucking sucks. And especially when
Oh, you, you muted yourself. You were in the
I said, sorry, and I said, it was especially when you're working hard, working your forty hours and you don't have enough money to pay your rent and buy your food. My daughter told me she can't pay, buy eggs no more because they're four dollars a carton. So that's just ridiculous. And I think that when we are positioned to power, we have a responsibility to the, to the people that we're, we're over, have power over, to help them as much as mu- as much as possible to help them li- live humanly. Just human decency. So, just planting a seed for you.
No, I think that's totally valid, and I a hundred percent agree with that. Um, you know, I would be very hesitant to vote for any salary increases for, you know, county employees that are in administration at this point before we give uh, salary increases at the bottom end of the scale. Uh, you know, some of the things that the salary study called for that I think are going to be implemented hopefully sooner rather than later, is actually eliminating some of the lowest pay, uh, like pay, um, uh, brackets. Um, so just eliminating them all together. So like, we're no longer going to hire people as a sta- starting salary. Uh, I think our lowest salary was like thirty-five or something like that used to be. We're eliminating a lot of those lower salary scales so that we're going to start employees, um, at a more decent living wage now that, um, you know, inflation has taken a toll on everything from, like you said, eggs to rent. And so, you know, absolutely, a hundred percent, I agree with that. One thing I want to say about commissioner salaries, which I think is important. Um, a lot of, so it does not look good, right, for the commissioners to try to increase their salaries before, uh, employees got an increase. Hundred percent agree with that. That probably shouldn't have been done. Um, I do want to make a quick argument that for, you know, paying elected officials and the importance of doing that. Because, um, if we underpay our elected officials, and I think the school board, you know, uh, it only gets paid like five hundred dollars a year. It's basically nothing. But when we do that, unfortunately, what we do is we, we tend to exclude certain populations from the ability to run for office, because if you are struggling to make ends meet and you look at an unpaid volunteer public office, you may not be able to make that happen if you're working two and three jobs. So I actually think that making sure that we pay our elected officials a decent salary is okay and should be a good thing, because to me, it is about, um, frankly, it's about equity and representation. Um, when we elect people who are not just, because when I started on the board, it was literally all retirees or people that were independently wealthy. Those were the only people that could afford to serve on the county board of commissioners. Uh, even in two thousand ten, when our salary was fifteen thousand dollars a year. Um, and now it's up to twenty-three thousand eight hundred. That's again, with inflation, it's not, you know, really where it needs to be. But to your point, we shouldn't be looking at increasing our salaries before we increase the salaries of all the other county employees. Hundred percent agree with that. Which brings me to my last point, and the, the idea that I have been pushing since I was on the board of commissioners, uh, which is I believe how commissioners should be, get their salaries set. Um, I introduced a resolution back in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, when I was chair of the board, to set commissioner salaries based on the lowest-paid county employee. So
Yusuf, you are, get out my head, because that's what I was thinking, because I was like, I absolutely, you guys need to get paid, but you should have get paid more than the lowest. Uh, and I like the idea of the resolution that you guys are talking about. Like the chairperson does so much more work, that they need to get more pa- paid and stuff, and that's absolutely. But I think we're all big businesses. The boss should have made more than the lowest employee or be able to, you know, you know, this should be reasonable.
So, yeah, I mean, so the, so the way that I did it, I mean, back in two thousand fourteen was I said, you take the salary of the lowest-paid employee, like in the union pay scale, I think we took the AFME pay scale, the union, lowest-paid union employee, which I think made like thirty-two thousand dollars. And I said, take that and then cut it in half, and that's what this commissioners should make, right? So we make half of the lowest-paid county employee salary. That's, that's what I put in place. When I, and so when I left, that was the policy at the county, was that commissioners made half of what the lowest-paid county employee made. And in my mind, what that does, it incentivized the board of commissioners to pay the lowest person more or to not pay the lowest-paid person. And so it increases the bottom, right? So now the commissioner is like, well, I want to get paid twenty thousand dollars a year. Okay, well then make the lowest-paid employee forty thousand dollars a year. You know, it creates that incentive structure to not screw over your employees, and that's what it should be, right? Um, they did away with that the minute I left, unfortunately, so that they could give a bigger increase to themselves. And, you know, again, yes, I think county commissioners should get paid, but I think that it should be based on something reasonable, rational, and based on the, the issues that we're talking about, right? And so now that I'm coming back, what I'm advocating for, uh, they tried to increase their salaries late last year. They weren't successful. It got voted down. So now I'm coming back and I'm saying, let's, let's redo this, okay? And let's, let's peg it to one-half of the lowest-paid county employees. Let's go back to that, right? And so then now you have this incentive to actually actively eliminate those low, low pay grades so that commissioners can get what they think that, you know, what this, and actually the salary study said that commissioners should make, I believe it was twenty-eight thousand something. And so it's like, okay, well, if that's what you think you should make, then peg it to the lowest-paid salary, and once theirs are increased, you'll get your increase, you know? So that's, that's kind of my philosophy. That's what I'm going to be advocating for. Um, so I love the question and uh, thanks for, for delving into that. I see Cheryl has her hand up. I'll go to you now, Cheryl. And you are muted.
Well, let's see if I can unmute. All right, you can hear me now, I'm sure. Uh, first of all, thank you so much to you as well as Representative Jones for doing this. You guys have been incredibly informative. So thank you for your time, and of course to Gail Summerhill for putting it together. Um, I have a budgetary question for the, uh, at the county level. Uh, the passage of Prop Two, um, back in November is going to increase the voting time to nine days. And we're also talking about moving up the primary presidential election to February, uh, which is only about thirteen months away. So there's this enormous challenge now about how are the townships, the villages, the cities going to accommodate that change? And how is the commissioners, and I know the clerk obviously is going to get involved in a budgetary way, going to support that effort? That's the question.
No, that has to be central, I mean, to our conversation over the next thirteen months, uh, hopefully sooner than thirteen months, like in the next five months, probably, we need to figure this out. But, uh, I'm, first of all, if they cha- if they do change the presidential primary date, um, that will be a state-level change. It's a piece of state legislation that's been introduced. Um, I am very much hoping to advocate at the state level for the state to allocate money, um, to help fulfill that. And I think the Association of County and City Clerks will probably be engaging in that way as well. So hopefully we can draw down some state revenue to help support it. Um, in the absence of state revenue, obviously, I think there are resources at the county to be able to do that, and I think that we should be, uh, obviously allocating more resources for the county and city clerks. Um, in particular, you know, I'll highlight that in this last election, um, there were massive lines. I mean, the, the pat- not just the passage of this, this proposal two in the last election, but also the passage of Proposal Three in two thousand eighteen, which allowed, um, same-day voter registration and allowed for, um, no reason absentee voting, where people are now showing up on election day to vote, and especially in student areas, you're seeing these massive lines that are forming. Um, and that is largely due to under-resourcing of the elections, uh, because, you know, I spent the day on election day at the Deuterstadt Center on the north side of Ann Arbor. Um, there was a line of probably five to six hundred, some, at some points, I think probably seven hundred and fifty students that were waiting in line. Um, the last student that got in line at eight o'clock, uh, did not vote until two ten AM. Um, so that individual waited in line for, uh, you know, way too long, uh, and that should never have happened. I mean, that's waiting in line for eight hours, um, you know, that, that just, that, or six hour, well, yeah, eight hours, that can't happen. Um, six hours. And so, um, but what's the solution, right? The solution is at that polling location, there were six, uh, you know, clerk staff that were helping people vote, that were looking at people's IDs and looking at the system. And you can only work through so fast when you have a line of seven hundred and fifty people and new people are joining at every minute. Um, and so the Secretary of State sent two employees down to help support it. So then there were, I think, eight people checking people, and well, that helped. Um, but, okay, how do we make it so that we don't have that problem, right? We're going to have to have more employees, more, you know, clerks' employees, more laptops, more computers. That's going to take money, to your point. So we need resources for our local clerks' offices, for our county clerk. Maybe the, maybe we should create a program at the county clerk's office where we deputize, um, you know, some clerk employees that can, uh, be roving. And then when there's a crisis situation like that, there's a line of seven hundred and fifty people, they can dispatch those employees to those polling locations and help to alleviate the lines. Um, so things like that, I think, are really creative ideas we need to be thinking through. Um, we, we should not have another election like the last one. It was great that we had amazing turnout, but we need to be prepared for that turnout. In order to do that, we need the money and the resources. Um, hopefully we can get some from the state, but short of that, we do have money at the county that I think we can allocate for that purpose.
Is there, um, money, I think there is a fair amount of money in the general fund at the state level that can be allocated to that right now? Couldn't there be, if I remember?
Um, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. There's a lot of money in the state general fund. Uh, and actually, there's, I believe, unspent currently about five billion dollars that the state has not spent. Um, and so that is money that can be used. Some of that money can be used for elections, and I think it should be.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah. All right, Gail, are you wrapping us up?
Of course, I'm wrapping you up. Um, okay, so here, let me, let, let's talk about, well, the election, the lines. So for black people, they've been standing in line for a long time, right? I've stood in line for a long time, and nobody cared about me being in line but each other. And as we see the, you know, other states and the laws of not having water in line. So, um, for Washtenaw County, um, for the first time for you to see lines, you know, uh, that's really not my number one priority. Uh, the fact that they had to experience it, and black people have experienced it for years and years and years. So, um, I would be careful, I would be careful with, you know, um, saying, oh, we, we got to use this money because we now recognize, oh my gosh, you had to stand in line for eight hours. Well, um, think about for the black people who stand in line, um, for years and years and years, and what the laws, you know, have been to make sure that, um, they can't have water. So I would be careful in this county, you know, because it is the people of color who do stand in line to make sure that you, you've gotten everything that you've gotten in this county because we did stand and, and, you know, vote. And communication as far as black media, I mean, you, you did not properly in this county, um, send, spend any money that I'm aware of on black media so that people were aware that they could early vote. And, um, having received a grant from Black Voters Matter, you know, and And, um, having received a grant from Black Voters Matter, you know, at the ninety-ninth hour. And be able to even fulfill a grant to get people to the polls in a creative way on the east side of the county. I mean, that means we need to work together. If we really want black voters votes because we did, um, we did show up. We did vote, we did give, you know, you didn't, you didn't do it by yourself. And so, um, going forward, expectation is, um. Where's the, where's the advertisement, uh, media in black media that you're investing in? Because we didn't get the, the, the messages. Until, you know, just like for me, under IPSY Can I Share to let the people know that there was a law that changed that they could vote. So that tells me there's, there's a bill that you've got to pay. For the, on, on the east side of this county. To be thought about if you expecting, you know, the state and, you know, just the state of Michigan. There is a bill to pay for each and every black person that help by casting a vote. So that, that, that's the first thing. So, um, no, I have no sympathy for standing, you know, anybody standing in line. Since it's a way of life, it has been for myself and many other people in other states.
But I, I don't know that it would be though, Gail. I mean, and I will say the majority of people that were standing in that line that I experienced were not white. Um, and so, but I, I, and so I don't, I don't, I would.
And maybe they didn't get the message that they could vote early in the same way. That, uh, people on the east side didn't get the message in the memo.
I did a lot of educating with the people in line. So I, I see exactly what you're saying, actually.
Right, right.
And the, to the point of how we fund, uh, uh, elections, yeah, the line piece and having staff is, uh, that's only a piece of it, right? You're absolutely right. And, and the majority of the money should be going to, uh, and, and I would love to actually work with you. Maybe we can bring the clerk's office in to put a list of media because I, I would agree, the way that the word has gotten out in the past. I've seen it on like, you know, some media sources, but really not in way, in ways and in places that. Will be digestible for the majority of people east of twenty-three. And so how, how do we, you know? I think there's an opportunity to, you know, bring Larry and other, you know, people in other clerk's offices to say. These are the media place we need to invest in and the county board can put money together, maybe like a fund to say. This is an advertising fund, like let's put the materials together, let's work with IPSY Can I Share, let's make it happen. And, and I also think based on what you're saying, there's, uh, Prop two and Prop three from twenty eighteen, Prop two from this year. Uh, that have changed the landscape completely and people need to know what their rights are. And so maybe there's a Know Your Rights, a series of videos or something that we can partner together with IPSY Can I Share on to. Um, you know, to get the word out on those things.
Well, e- exactly. I mean, I look at, I look at many of the committees that are put together and. Though people that are on these committees making decisions for especially people on the east side that have been excluded. They're not speaking for them. So I think that, um. I would surely be happy for every single board that you're listening to from the east side of this county to say. I can choose some people that will tell you the truth because what you're coming up with, it, it does not. It is not all the people on the east side because they're, they're not at the table.
Right.
So, yes, and wrapping it up, so what, one of the. Yes, investing in being, um, uncomfortable because you need to be uncomfortable to come on the east side. Um, people, pe- black people don't have to vote. If, if nothing's changing for them, you know, we could sit out and, and watch and see what happens. And, 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 and see what, what happens now that you've got a total Democrat. Um, you know, House and Senate and see what's going to change. And that change, also what we're looking at locally here is our, our county commissioners. They failed us with a, a big E, red and circle. For what, uh, was intended for this east side of the county. I mean, at least the, the Biden plan is, is on our website. People feel like, I guess they did not have to follow. Some of the suggestions because I don't see anything that they did in an expeditious way for all of the people that died on the east side. There is not one single thing and you, and even when the commissioners came into IPSY, they, they, did they listen? No, they didn't listen. They were present because they certainly didn't hear the cries of the people who were suffering the most from COVID. So as a, as a notification, if you think board of commissioners are going to start off. Doing the same thing that they did, you know, for the last two years at all of the deaths. That happened and all the illnesses that people still have. I mean, you're going to be ready for a, a big battle because there's a whole lot of people that are not on this call, so their names were not shown. Uh, but they're ready to make sure that those people are going to be heard. Because we are, we're ready. And so now we were just wait, you know, waiting for this year to come in. So please watch what you do, what you say and quit photo opping like you did something great for us. Because truly you did not, you know, you, you, at the last ninety-ninth hour when Biden said urgently. To help these people most in need and you get to the ninety-ninth hour and you think that was great? On whose report card?
Right.
So, uh, that's my last statement in closing to, to let you know. All elected, we're doing our work to empower every single person that was excluded. So I would, I, I would tread lightly, you know, when you're, you're thinking about opening your mouth. And, and, and having to be held accountable for what you say. So, with that being said. Thank you everyone, you know, for this, this long, lengthy, well-needed explanation. For everyone. This wasn't just for Washtenaw County, as I said in the beginning. I am glad that the people stayed on the line from other places and spaces. Uh, you know, not Washtenaw County because Washtenaw County, I don't think has looked outside to look for any best practices. From other states and how well they've got their, even during pandemic to build trust. And to lift up the least amongst us. So thank you all for coming. Thank you all for, um, coming from, you know, out of state, out of county. And to, uh, take a copy of this message so that we can empower others to let them know that. Each one of us, we are somebody, you know, we're somebody and we do matter. So, thank you, Jewel. Thank you very much for coming. Um, in a couple of weeks, we'll have another series and these series are not just for Washtenaw. They're for all areas so that people are empowered and ready. For two thousand and twenty-three. So thank you all very much. Thank you, um, Megan for, for filling in the gap. Um, just thank you everyone and I appreciate you coming and staying with us. For this not traditional, uh, meeting that just went to the, the end where everyone was satisfied. And I, and thank you again.
Thank you, Gail. You're, you're a rock star in the community and you, you held it all together. So. We, uh, we're here to follow you and to listen to you and we appreciate you. So thank you for putting this on.
Yeah, thanks, Gail. Appreciate you and, 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 uh, everyone else that's on the call. So, you know, I'm right down the freeway. Um, so I, I'm definitely, uh, looking forward to building with you all, but much love though.
All right. Anybody else? What last closing?
Thank you. I really enjoyed it. Thank you for the information.
And, and to let you know, I, I told you in the beginning, it's because of Jamila that, uh, we started these series. Because she asked one question, what, what so-and-so's job? And then now we're here and we're in a series, you know, so that we can all listen and learn too. All right, anybody else?
I would like to say thank you for taking the time out and discuss all this information with us. It was very informative. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will, uh, close and then figure out how to put it up on YouTube. So that way for those who did make it, if they want to know something, send them to, it's, send them to IPSY Can I Share YouTube. When we upload it. Thank you again. Thank you. Oh, you know what? I wanted to say one last thing. I forgot. I'm sorry. What? Okay, I want to go back to, um. Uh, IPSY Can I Share did their first, first video. And that was after, um, after the Proud Boys stormed Michigan's capital. Remember that, Yusuf?
I sure do.
Right. And that was, that was. We had, we had the video up in three days. We did not have to get to January sixth. Because we did the trial run in, in, in the state of Michigan.
We knew what they were planning.
We knew, wait a minute, black people knew what they were planning. White people didn't know that white people could come after them in that way. So that is why they were not prepared. And we set the playbook to let you know how you felt. And so I wanted to make note to say. If we listen to all the people and not just some of the people, maybe we would be a lot better off. Because you don't necessarily know and, and you're not prepared. If you only have a certain group of people. And not all people and their perspective. Because certainly we should not have ever gotten to January sixth. For the en- entire country because you just didn't hear or understand. You know, what the test run was. So I will take credit and we will all take credit for that video to go back and say, they, they tried to warn them.
Yep.
So with that last remark and, uh, we made it. So thank you. All right.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.